All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I call this May 27, 2025, hyper-administered meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Benson will be appearing via Zoom. Is he with us? Okay. And so we will be proceeding with roll call votes this evening for all of our voting items. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much, Commissioner Baca. Good evening, Madam County Manager. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Staff is requesting that the rules be suspended for the following items and be presented and considered for final adoption this evening. Final adoption consideration is requested to meet the state statute deadlines and begin emergency work. 11C, Community Services: Introduction of a Resolution for the Liquor License Tax and in the unincorporated area for fiscal year 2026 be heard under adoption of resolution as Item 10B. And 11G, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space: Introduction of a Resolution Whispering Pine Senior Center ALTSD Emergency Grant be heard under adoption of resolutions as Item 10C. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda and suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Madam County Manager. Commissioners, any changes on the commission's side? So we have a request from staff for a rule suspension on two items. I would make a motion for the rule suspension.
Second?
A second. Seeing no discussion, if we could get a roll call vote, please, on the rule suspension.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboya.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Passes on a 4-0 vote for the rule suspension. Seeing no other changes to the agenda, could we get a roll call vote on approval of the agenda? I'm sorry, we need to make a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move.
In a second. Now the roll call vote. Thank you.
You got it. Commissioner Frank Baca. Commissioner Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboya.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Can I privilege, could you?
Yes, Commissioner Barboya, Vice Chair.
I'd just like to recognize that we have the privilege and honor of having previous Commissioner Maggie Hart-Studins in our presence this afternoon. Bye, previous Commissioner. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. All right, we will move into our proclamations for the evening. We have Mental Health Awareness Month sponsored by Madam Vice Chair Barboya.
Thank you. And so I'm going to read this great poem. If folks know or don't know, you should know that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. I think we're in such a great place that folks are recognizing stigma is going down. We all have to do our part to make sure people don't feel stigmatized and feel ready and that we have services available and that people don't have to feel any kind of shame or stigma for accessing mental health, especially in these times. And I'm just so glad we've seen so much more media and otherwise. We have some folks that'll accept this. We have Rosella Sanchez, Director of the New Mexico Crisis Access Line, and her staff to receive the proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation first and then give you all some time to say some words and then we'll take a quick picture if that's okay. Okay, whereas May is Mental Health Awareness Month, which is a time to lift our shared vision of a county where anyone affected by mental health challenges can get their care to live healthy, fulfilling lives. And whereas this year's theme is Turn Awareness into Action, which highlights that the world is constantly changing and it can be overwhelming, results in a demand, a rising demand for human connection, a sense of community hope, and for discrimination-free, accessible behavioral healthcare. And whereas Bernalillo County will, after having passed a Behavioral Health Ordinance in 2024 resulting in a new Behavioral Health Authority Division, continue to help in navigating a changing world. And whereas more than one in five U.S. adults live with a mental health challenge, making one of the most common health conditions, and one, and over one in five youth ages 13 to 18 either currently or at some point during their lives have had a serious emotional condition. And whereas social, cultural, and historical factors often disproportionately impact the mental health of communities that have traditionally been marginalized, which leads to a mental health burden that is deeper than what others may face. And whereas the New Mexico Crisis in Action Line, Access Line, and MCal counselors respond to Behavioral Health 988 crisis calls, texts, and chats, and the New Mexico Peer-to-Peer Warm Line offers ongoing recovery support by those with lived experience who are trained to help others. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 25 as Mental Health Awareness and calls upon the community, public, and private institutions, businesses, and schools to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental well-being, as well as promote steps our community may take to protect their mental well-being, implement trauma-informed and responsive initiatives, and provide appropriate and accessible services to all people with mental health conditions and needs. Done this 27th day of May 2025 in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico. Thank you. And thank you, Rosella Sanchez, Director, and any of your staff. Please, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much for having us and honoring us today. I'm joined by Phil, our Chief Executive Officer, Claire, our 988 Manager, and Olivia, who is actually one of our Call Center counselors, and I believe another Call Center Warm Line is going to be joining us. But we just want to tell everybody, thank you for supporting 988, New Mexico Crisis and Access Line. In addition to the Call Center for 988 across New Mexico, we also have the Peer-to-Peer Warm Line. In 2024, we had over 85,000 calls to our 988 and over 63,000 calls to our Warm Line. And during a survey, we actually learned that 96% of our callers feel that their, when they called, that their call was helped and they were actually stabilized by our Call Center counselors. So I really encourage people to take advantage and give us a call. And it's for any reason. It's whatever your struggle is. We don't identify what your crisis is. It's what you identify and what your needs are. And there's no shame. There's no judgment. And it's free and it's confidential. So thank you so much for having us and honoring us today.
Thank you, Director Sanchez. And just a couple, is that 24 hours?
24 hours, 365 days a year. And our Peer-to-Peer Warm Line, you can actually text, chat, and call, both numbers. And so please, you know, make sure that you share that information.
Absolutely wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Lindstrom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I think Rosella Sanchez said it aptly. I don't know if there's much more that I can add, but you know, when I started as the New Mexico Behavioral Health Director, there was not one single point of access in the state. And so when we launched, it was the first time that there was a number immediately available regardless of your situation. And it's only continued to grow and blossom. And with the federal enabling legislation and the work of the FCC, to now be able to offer chat and text too has really taken us far beyond where we were before because we had no utilization by young people. And as you all know, I've got six adult kids. They will talk to me on the phone. I've got to text them. And so as a result of having text in particular, young people are now accessing this service for the first time. So this is just the front door. It's not the end-all-be-all, but it's a critical resource. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. And thank you all for the work you do every day. And yes, let's keep growing it to everyone else's mission. Spread the word about 988. Thank If you don't mind, we'll take a picture.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service.
With all of us, yeah. Thank you all so much.
Just a quick point of privilege on that. I wanted to thank Dr. Lindstrom and his team for really pushing this information out as well about 988 and those resources. Also Deputy County Managers to deal where we've started to see that on county message boards and in our community centers and all over our county facilities, getting the word out about this service. So and I know that that was one of the first things you said on, in one of your first weeks here, that we needed to really make a strong push to get that out. And you've done that. Thank you. All right. And we have one more proclamation. We have the National Foster Care Awareness and Appreciation Recognition Month. Commissioner Benson, I believe, has asked Commissioner Frank Baca to present this.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your mic.
Thank you. It's my honor and privilege to read a proclamation in honor of National Foster Care Awareness and Appreciation and Recognition Month. And President, I understand, are Marilyn Beck and Anne McKinney. Are they here? Okay, I don't know if you'd both like to go up to the podium or not, or perhaps say a few words after the, I read the proclamation. You're welcome to. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the children and youth of Bernalillo County and the State of New Mexico represent our most precious resource and hold within them the promise of our future. And whereas there are children and youth in our community who, through no fault of their own, are unable to live with their biological families and require safe, nurturing, and temporary homes. Whereas foster parents selflessly open their hearts and homes, providing these children and youth with stability, support, and love during challenging times in their lives. And whereas foster parents, kinship caregivers, dedicated social workers, committed volunteers, and compassionate community partners work tirelessly to ensure the well-being and best interests of children and youth in foster care. And whereas the invaluable contribution of foster families strengthen our community, offering hope and opportunities to vulnerable children and youth, and paving the way for brighter future. Whereas National Foster Care Appreciation Month provides an important opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate the extraordinary dedication and profound impact of foster parents and all those who support them. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners joins the nation in recognizing May as National Foster Care Appreciation Month, and call upon all citizens to recognize and appreciate the vital role of foster parents. And to actively support the children and youth in foster care in our community through acts of kindness, volunteerism, and advocacy done this 27th day of May 2025 in Bernalillo County, New Mexico. Thank you all.
If you'd like to say a few words, please.
I didn't know if Commissioner Benson wanted to say something.
Commissioner Benson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Beck. And thank you, Commissioner Frank Baca. You're, I love, just, that was, that was perfect. Your delivery was almost better than the actual words in the message. And Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize, I wish I could be there tonight. I regret not being able to. I love the work that Ms. Beck and Annie are doing for foster children throughout New Mexico. They're tireless advocates. They are saving, saving lives. They're saving lives of children, the ones that don't have anybody to fight for them and speak for them. That's exactly what these ladies in their organization do. They fight on the local level, on the state level, on the national level. And yeah, I just want to, I can't, I can't speak highly enough for them. And again, Commissioner Baca, thank you so much for reading this tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Beck.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Beck. I know many of you. And thank you. Nationally, one in three foster families will quit fostering within their very first year of fostering. New Mexico actually has more unique challenges that make it even harder to be a foster parent, and my organization is trying to change that. We serve foster and kinship caregivers so that they can share their homes with love, support, and the confidence necessary to help children not just survive but thrive. Children need relationships to thrive and recover from trauma. New Mexico has the highest level of trauma of any children in the entire country. Children need excellent parenting every single day through committed, developmentally-informed relationships with caring adults. And so we are proud to support, we work to improve the lives of the children in foster care. Bernalillo County has the highest in our state, and support and empower those who support them. I also, not only is it National Foster Care Month, I do want to take a moment and recognize and thank the BCSO SVU unit. You all should know the extraordinary work your frontline SVU is doing. You got emotional reading this. Those units, and you've seen some of the horrible news stories recently. Your sheriffs, your deputies have been out trying to make that home safe, insofar as they have been picking up trash on the single home because CFD refuses to take the kids into custody. And so to try to make a home a safe and livable environment for a very specific instance, I just want you to know that your deputies, your sheriffs, that department, they are saving lives. And so this is Foster Care Awareness Month, but it takes a village to raise a child, and we should be very proud here in Bernalillo. Thank you.
All right. Next up this evening, we have our certificates and awards. And Vice Chair is going to be presenting a recognition to Judge Tommy Jewell.
Thank you so much. And I hope Mr. Judge, oh yay, he's here. Wonderful. Please come on up. Anybody want. But I'm going to read this, and I know he loves hearing about himself. Just kidding. He really doesn't like it. But we're going to do it anyways. And I just had to take a few moments, just to say, I used to work as a case manager with adjudicated youth, youth aging out of foster care. And at the time, Judge Jewell was working with young adult court, with children's court. It was just so great to see him work then. Been honored that he was the person that interim Commissioner Colley, Colley, had picked. And we also have a room named after him because he's done incredible service at our International District Library. So anyways, I'm going to read this and give you a few minutes to speak. Acknowledgement, Honorable Tommy Jewell, acknowledging that Tommy E. Jewell has served the state of New Mexico with distinction and integrity, becoming the first African-American judge in the state when appointed to the Bernalillo County Metropolitan Court in 1984, and continuing his legacy as a judge of the Second Judicial Court for 18 years, including 10 years as the presiding judge of the children's court. And acknowledging that Judge Jewell has demonstrated unwavering commitment to justice, fairness, and community, co-founding the New Mexico Black Lawyers Association in 1982 to support African-American legal professionals and promote diversity, equity, and civil rights within the legal system. And acknowledging that Judge Jewell's service has extended beyond the bench through his work as a mediator, educator, and public servant, including his leadership and upcoming retirement from his post as Chair of the Bernalillo County Sheriff's Office Advisory and Review Board, where he has advocated for public transparency, accountability, and community engagement in law enforcement practices. And acknowledging that Judge Jewell has been widely recognized for his contributions, receiving numerous honors, including the Outstanding Judicial Service Award from the State Bar of New Mexico, the Distinguished Achievement Award from the University of New Mexico School of Law, and being named Outstanding Judge by the Albuquerque Bar Association. And acknowledging that Judge Jewell is also a devoted mentor and respected leader in civic life, embodying excellence in both professional and personal service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners conveys its deepest gratitude and recognition to the Honorable Tommy E. Jewell for his historic and continuing contributions to the judiciary, the legal profession, and the people of Bernalillo County and the state of New Mexico. Done this 13th day of May 2025 in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, I'm deeply honored. I'm going to get like my colleague, Commissioner Baca there. I have so many connections to this board. I just wanted to say, I choked up too. The little service that I was able to give, I appreciate. But certainly the foster care is near and dear to my heart, having been a children's court judge for the amount of time that I spent there. And I know the importance of that work. My Commissioner, Commissioner Barboya, I have to correct the record on one thing. The naming of the room in the library is after my dad, my mom and dad. We lost my dad last year. One of the connections I have to Commissioner Baca. Her dad was my principal at Hayes Mid School. And my dad was an educator, of course. And I had the opportunity to grow up in that neighborhood and be nurtured. And so that connection is very near and dear to me. But I really appreciate the establishment of SORB, the importance of its work, and the effort that these folks, please, SORB members and staff, if you are here, please stand up and let me just have you recognize. And as I leave that work, you can rest assured that it's in good hands. And so somebody said something about the sheriff and the deputies assisting in the foster care effort, going out to make sure that homes are safe. Man, you know, these folks are where the rubber meets the road. And it's just so much appreciated. How could I do any less than serve on SORB? So thank you for that opportunity. And I'll take my little picture, and you all can return to more important business than me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got to, hold up, hold up. We've got a couple of commissioners.
You have a few minutes. You have a few things. And I'll, before I let the others, I'll just say my one last part is I mentioned that I was a case manager for YDI when you were at children's court. And I remember you commissioned a study to see about racial disparities in the judicial process. And like, maybe something is racist we talk about a lot now, but this was 20 years ago, and it was not then. And I just remember you stood out so much to me for being brave enough to take that lead. So thank you.
Commissioner Barbara Baca, and then I'll go to Commissioner Frank Baca.
Judge Jewell, thank you so much. Just, I just wanted to also say, I knew you through your service with my father, City Councilor, County Commissioner Pat Baca, and also my sister, Judge Teresa Baca, who served on the bench with you. And I feel so proud that coming full circle, being able to work with you your last few years on the SORB as a commissioner, just proud that our community has great people like you in it. So thank you. It's been my honor.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Thank you. And Judge Jewell, I'm happy that you're being honored in this context. But I don't know if you realize, everybody in the audience, what an amazing person we're having in front of us. I'm going to embarrass them. I know, it's okay. Because we go back a few years, quite a few years. I don't know if you really want me to say how many years. But it goes back to law school, right? That was quite a few years.
At least I have gray hair.
And I'm going to tell you a few things about him that you may not know. Judge Jewell's an amazing athlete. I don't know if you all knew that in high school and in college, sports. Also, as further on his career, as a martial artist, as an instructor, and as a dojo, that he did actually have some, for a period of time in the South Valley. And I always appreciated that. I've known Judge Jewell also as a lawyer, you know, worked with him in cases, probably against him once or twice, I don't know. And certainly know him as a judge, years of service as a judge. And more recently, although I haven't been there lately, more recently, I don't know if you know, he's also an amazing musician. He is a drummer in a band, who I've heard and played and danced to many, many times. So I run across Judge Jewell in all these different contexts. And another interesting thing and important thing is that he's excelled in each and every one of those applications. And so I just think we're honoring you for this, which is great. But all the other things that you have done throughout your life have always amazed and impressed me. So I'm just glad that we got to say a few words about you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Judge Jewell, I just want to thank you for all your work and your sacrifice. And James Stewart, my appointee to the SORB, has just spoken so highly of you and all the work you've done in a leadership role, both officially and unofficially. And so thank you for all your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner. And I'll, I'll got to get in here too. Thanks, Commissioner, and I'll gotta get in here too, and just say, your leadership on this board has just been incredible, kind of, I believe you were the founding chair, one of the founding members, right? Yeah, pretty incredible, and the group of folks that you've had along with you and led them through that formation, those formation years. The work that you guys do is incredible, Commissioner Frank Buck and I have talked a lot about the annual reports and the other work that you all produce, that really sets the pace for all of our boards and commissions of just being a really valuable body, giving us really good input and advice, really setting the bar high, and I think that all started at the top with you, from your leadership, and the folks that you've inspired to work with you, your colleagues. So I just wanna, again, circle back to where we started here on this board, recognizing you for your service, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I almost forgot. I also got you this aloe vera to keep it going. I heard it lasts, so, you could leave it there, take a picture with us, please. I'll put it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to our public comment communication section. Each person has two minutes, you'll be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you're speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. In order to maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present, speakers must adhere to the two-minute time limit. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, may be subject to removal. Javier, could you please call the names?
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we have a total of twelve speakers with one speaker on Zoom. I will call the names three at a time, please line up at the podium when your name is called. First speaker will be former Commissioner Maggie Hart Stebbins, Dr. Geraldo Cionello, and Aileen Castellan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Maggie Hart Stebbins. I am a resident of District Three, and I had the incredible honor to serve as the District Three Burnley County Commissioner for more than ten years. It is just so wonderful to be here, to see the familiar faces of my friends that I made over all of those years. Great to be here, and I'm here to urge you to support the two items on your agenda pertaining to PB&J. I want to start by saying that I was hoping I would be joined by my fellow former Commissioner, Debbie O'Malley, now Senator O'Malley. She had intended to join me here, she was unable, but she did ask that I speak for her in support of PB&J. So, since I left the Burnley County Commission, I have served on the PB&J Board, and you could say that my support for PB&J is generational. I followed my mother, who was on the Board for decades, and through her eyes and her experience as a court-appointed special advocate for children, I could see how uniquely qualified PB&J is to care for children in our community who experience adverse childhood experiences, abuse, neglect, and incarcerated parents sometimes, and other adverse childhood experiences. As I'm sure you know, ACEs are traumas that have significant and lasting effects on a child's development and well-being. Children who experience a high number of ACEs have an increased risk of behavioral health conditions and chronic disease, increased risk of ending up incarcerated themselves. Now, I am sure I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know, but it bears repeating that in addition to the entirely human benefit of providing comfort and care and services to our children, there are significant cost savings for our community in helping them, and many of those costs fall on county government. So there are many benefits to what PB&J does. I will say that being on the Burnley County Commission was an honor of a lifetime, and PB&J was always a priority for me. And one of my few regrets is that we were not able to fund the PB&J building during my time on the Commission, so I want to say thank you for making it your priority and for getting it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and it's good to see you.
Dr. Geraldo Cionello, Aileen Castellan, followed by Angie Vasio.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and County Commissioners and staff. Yesterday, we paused as a nation to honor the brave men and women who gave their lives sacrificially in service to the United States of America. Just as Messiah Jesus sacrificed love by his shed blood on the cross for our sins, the sacrifice is the highest form of love for our country, and it is our solemn duty to remember them, not just yesterday, but every day. As she was taught, there is no greater love than to lay down one's life for one's friends, and that, my dear friends, are us, who are blessed to live in the greatest nation in the world. As a naturalized American citizen, taxpayer, minister, and alternative health doctor, I stand humble and grateful for those who paid the ultimate price to protect our freedoms. They fought so that we might live in the land where liberty, faith, and individual rights are preserved. Did you know, these heroes did not die for a government, they died for a way of life, for the right to worship and breed freely, to raise families in accordance with our values, and to live as blessed patriotic Americans who defended the bare freedom for which they died, where peace is won at the most precious price. New Mexico deserves a future rooted in faith, culture, and traditional values. We must protect this foundation from those who seek to erase them. Tonight, as we remember these heroes, we renew our commitment to ensuring that their ultimate sacrifice was not in vain. Let's honor them by standing strong for our faith, freedom, and family. Let's honor them by living lives worthy of their sacrifice. May God bless the families of our heroes, of fallen soldiers, and those missing in action, prisoner of wars, and wounded warriors. May God bless Burnley County, New Mexico, and the USA. Thank you.
Aileen Castellan, followed by Angie Vasio, followed by Kay Bonke.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Aileen Castellan, and I'm here on behalf of the Samia Project and resident of District Two. I turned twenty-seven years old this year, and growing up, I was often moving around a lot. I struggled to adjust to new schools, new teachers, and friends. However, I was always so proud of my parents for their exceptional resilience and dedication to our family. Our move always meant a better job, more mobility, and more family time. The sacrifices they made and the years of struggle they endured is why I'm here today. Reflecting on those years, I'm very grateful for the hopefulness and the joy that my family brought and my community brought towards the progress we see today. Their bravery inspires me to continue wishing, demanding, and fighting for more. That's why I'm here today. I would like to ask for the support and investment of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to help launch a workforce pre-apprenticeship and job internship program for young adults in Burnley County, like Next Gen. Programs like Next Gen are rooted in the opportunity to dream big and be hopeful about the future. It's an opportunity to ensure struggling youth like myself and their families are supported to become leaders in their community. With hands-on experience and wraparound services, this is a powerful time to invest in our workforce, our mobility, and overall health. I want to thank you for your time and everyone here. It really does take a village to, you know, nurture a community that cares about each other, and I, today I get to see some of those folks that were behind that. So thank you for your time and for your consideration and this investment, not only to our youth, our economy, but really to shape our future.
Angie Vasio, followed by Kay Bonke, followed by Emmett Yappa.
Hi, Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of PB&J and some agenda items that you have to support it. PB&J is a fifty-three-year-old agency, began in nineteen seventy-two in the South Valley of Albuquerque, where we continue. We are unfortunately in a building that's over a hundred years old and has been partially condemned. So we're asking that your support, of course, in making us have a permanent home in the South Valley, very close to where we currently are, but in a brand-new building that we have much of the money for, but not all. PB&J serves very, very high-risk kids and their families. We've heard a little bit tonight about ACEs, which are adverse childhood experiences. Well, we build resiliency in these children, children who've experienced child abuse, neglect, sexual abuse, domestic violence, live in pervasive poverty, have housing instability, and babies born with drug effects. We not only help them with resilience, but we help their parents, because always we work with families, as a stable, secure, and strong unit. We build protective factors in their parents, who themselves have experienced high ACEs, parental criminality, parental mental illness, parental substance misuse. And I can go on and on. These are the situations that unfortunately go in cycles. We break those cycles, we work with these families, and they go on to have this incredible success, and the stories abound. With your vote tonight to support this building, is that, did I do something?
You can finish up.
Well, PB&J will go on to have years and years of more success, and success in a building that will be just a beautiful tribute to all the families that come through it. I thank you so much for your support, but I also thank you for your tireless, tireless efforts on behalf of the people of Burnley County, some of you for generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasio.
Kay Bonke, followed by Emmett Yappa, followed by Bernice Estrada.
And just to recognize real quick, we have a former Representative Kay Bukku with us.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Olivas, County Commissioners, and the general public. My name is Kay Bonke, I'm a mom of a kindergartner, the former state representative of House District Nineteen, and a senior advisor with the Samia Project. Last week was Career Day at my kid's school, and I hosted an organizing training. I asked, what's the most important issue to you at school? And if you can believe it, these brilliant five- and six-year-olds came to consensus that they cared most about having time outside. I asked, why does being outside matter? And this is what they told me, it makes me healthier, it's where I'm most creative, I make friends on the playground, and I get my energy out, which helps me focus in class. I'm so grateful to Chair Olivas for introducing an admin resolution to stand-up youth pre-apprenticeships and internships in the field of natural resources. This investment supports careers in the environment while filling crucial county positions. Organizations like the Samia Project provides training to young people through culturally tailored curriculum, covering topics like water and land management, and connection to wisdom keepers who hold the stories of plants, animals, and insects, ensuring that young people will be successful in these careers through skill-based learning and grounding in their connection to land. In my twenty years working in community, I know what it means to grow leaders in place to see whole neighborhoods transform into thriving, healthy spaces that develop thriving, healthy people. I know investments like what Chair Olivas is proposing tonight will open up opportunities for young people who, maybe like me, come from families experiencing economic poverty, yet know they have what it takes to build healthy communities, not just for themselves, but for those kindergartners who know our future is tied to our connection to land. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Emmett Yappa, followed by Bernice Estrada, followed by Janeth Antion.
Greetings, Madam Chair, County Commissioners, and Community. My name is Emma Yappa, and I'm here today representing the Samia Project as a tribal cultural member and a citizen of this land. From a young age, I was instilled with the importance of caring for Mother Earth. Core values centered around the well-being of our water, our land, and community have guided me to work, to the work that I do today. However, my early perception of career paths was limited to professions such as police officer, lawyers, doctor, while these are undoubtedly valuable and necessary fields, I believe there is a broader spectrum of opportunities available, and these paths may not align with everyone's individual journey, including my own. That's why I'm here to voice my support for a workforce pre-apprenticeship and job internship program for young adults in Burnley County, like Next Gen. These programs offer youth the chance to explore careers in natural resources, preparing them for impactful roles, and enabling them to envision a future filled with opportunities right here in our county. Reflecting on my own experience in high school, I once established a recycling program in my tribal community. Without any formal training or professional guidance, I could only imagine how powerful it would have been to have a program, have access to a program such as Next Gen, that provides hands-on training in climate resilient fields, cultivates leadership skills, and connects youth with mentors and industry professionals. This is not just about jobs, it's about creating pathways to meaningful careers that uplift our people and protect our planet, Mother Earth. Programs like this help our community members find purpose, gain skills, and contribute to the well-being of future generations. By investing in this program, you're not only supporting workforce development, you're strengthening community resilience, honoring cultural values, and creating opportunities that reflect the richness of our land and people. Thank you for your leadership, for taking the time to listen, and for your consideration in support of youth-centered, climate-forward workforce development initiatives in our county. I especially appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Thank you.
Bernice Estrada, followed by Janeth Antion, followed by Carolina Carrio.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Bernice Estrada, and I am here on behalf of the Samia Project, as well as a lifelong advocate for youth, climate justice, and racial equity in New Mexico. I am here to ask you to support and invest in the future of our community by approving that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand appropriation to launch a workforce pre-apprenticeship and job internship program for young adults in Burnley County, like Next Gen. Growing up, the careers that felt most accessible were in the service industry, low-wage labor, or whatever came with survival. But our youth deserve more than survival, they deserve direction, purpose, and the chance to thrive in careers that uplift both our people and our planet. This is a powerful opportunity for Burnley County to invest directly in young people, especially youth of color, immigrant youth and others who have long been excluded from traditional workforce and environmental pathways. Programs like this expose youth to careers in natural resources and prepare them for roles in urban forestry, herbalism, land management, and outdoor education. These opportunities create meaningful career pathways that allow youth to build their futures right here at home. This program doesn't just benefit our youth, but estrains the county environmental stewardship, economic stability, and public health. Our apprentices should become caretakers of the land and leaders in their communities, helping you build a more sustainable and equitable New Mexico. Thank you so much for considering this investment in our future. Thank you.
Janeth Antion, followed by Carolina Carrio, followed by Elizabeth Kuna.
Hello, County Commissioners. My name is Janeth Antion, speaking on behalf of the Samia Project. As a community organizer who has walked alongside young adults for over a decade, and as a mother of two young daughters who deserve a future full of possibilities, I'm here to ask the Commission to support the resolution for the workforce pre-apprenticeship and job internship program for young adults, programs like Next Gen that open real career pathways. Growing up, many of us believed our only options were limited to fast-food jobs, cashier roles. cashier roles, housekeeping, staying home to care for others, or other demanding jobs. While these paths are valuable, they shouldn't be the only ones that we see as possible. Having programs like Next Gen, which expose our youth to careers in natural resources and prepares them to take on roles in urban forestry, herbalism, land management, and other, and outdoor education, will allow our youth to see a future of new opportunities here at Burnaleo County. These are not just jobs, they're futures for youth that can envision and build towards. And for young parents who often feel left behind, these programs say there is still a path forward and you belong in these spaces too. Thank you Chair Olivas for introducing this resolution, and thank you to the Commissioners who have already shown their support. We hope the full Commission will stand behind this critical investment in our next generation.
Carolina Carrillo, followed by Elizabeth Kuna, followed by Victoria Alarcón.
Hello, uh, Con- County Commissioners. My name is Carolina Carrillo, and I'm, and be helped with the Semilla Project. And as a mother of five children, I'm here to ask you to support, invest in our future of the community. One of my children, at just 18-years-old, felt that he had no choice but to leave the state to find a career opportunities he was looking for. If anyone here is a parent, you will know how my heart breaks. Knowing that we live in a place where our young people feel that they have to live in order to pursue their dreams. That's why this proposed for workforce pre- apprenticeship and job internship program for youth adults is critical. Programs, programs like Next Gen help young people to explore career in nature resources, urban, forestry, herbalism, land management, management, and outdoor education, while building skills to lead the meaningful, long-term employment. These are the ca- the kinds of opportunities that we can keep our youth rooting in Burnaleo County, contributing to our community, caring for our land, and leading in their communities. Thank you for advancing this v- vision, and special thanks to Chair Olivas and the Commissioners who are championing this res- resolution and showing true commitment to creating equitable pathways for Next Gen generations. Thank you for helping me bring my son back.
Elizabeth Kuna, followed by Victoria Alarcón.
Good afternoon, uh, County Commissioner members. I'm here to ask the support for the administrative resolution for worsh- workforce, uh, development apprenticeship, job training, young adults. I wanna share why. I'm 38-years-old, and for the first time this year, I'm spending time in the morning and in the afternoon when I go home to teach my kids about gardening and feeding our chickens, uh, in our backyard. And I thought that was something that just white people do. Then I realized that this has been me for generations. But then, we forgot. We forgot because we need to survive, we need to just work, two, three jobs. And I just wanna remind you all, this kind of internship or job opportunities, what we are doing here together with you all's help and leadership is to remind our young people that they belong to the land, that they can take care of the land, that it's normal to have chickens and gardens in your backyard, and share all that with your community. And that they have all those skills and they can do a living for it. So I just wanna thank you all and encourage you to keep being a champions for what you are doing today. Because that is not just innovation, but we're breaking the cycle of a lot of perpetuity that we have intel to our community, you do not belong. So thank you so much for that.
Our last speaker, Victoria Alarcón.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, no worries. Hello, my name is Victoria Laconmasias, and I'm here today representing the Semilla Project. But more importantly, I'm here as someone who grew up in New Mexico, deeply connected to this land and community. Growing up, the careers I saw around me were in service work and construction, honest and hard-working paths. But I rarely saw jobs that reflected the land, our culture, or the deeper potential within our people. I didn't see people who looked like me in environmental careers, or steward, stewarding our natural resources. And for a long time, it made it hard to imagine a future for myself in those spaces. Programs like Next Gen, which offers pre-apprenticeships and internships in areas like land stewardship, green infrastructure, and outdoor education are not just about jobs. They're about helping youth find a purpose that's aligned with their roots, their values, and their dreams. They show young people that they belong in these spaces. Supporting this program means more funding, a youth initiative. It means investing in young people like me who want to give back, protect the environment, and grow strong, rooted leadership in our own communities. It's about ensuring that future generations don't have to look so hard to see themselves in careers that care for our land and our people. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. This investment is in our youth, New Mexico, our lands, and the future of Burnaleo County. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you Chair, that, this concludes our public comment for tonight.
Thank you Javier, and wanna extend a, a special appreciation to all of our public commenters this evening on some really thoughtful and, and really special public comments. Appreciate you being here tonight. So next up, I do have to read a couple of statements into the record from the closed meetings we had earlier this afternoon. I offered the following statement regarding the closed meeting held today, Tuesday, May 27, 2025, at 1:30 PM. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held May 27, 2025 were discussed at the closed meeting. Uh, I need a motion for approval of this statement, and it'll become part of the record of this meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from the Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could get a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you Madam Clerk. Passes 5-0. And then, a second statement. I move that the Burnaleo County Attorney and County Manager be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, within the parameters set by this Commission to include matters published in the closed meeting agenda.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, if we could roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you. Passes 5-0. All right, we are gonna move on to our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for Item 7G, 7H, 7K, and 7L?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 7G is AR 2025-50. 7H is FR 2025-51. 7K is FR 2025-52. And 7L is AR 2025-53.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Consent agenda has been published and made available to the public. And resolutions have been introduced at previous meetings. Therefore, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Commissioner Frank Baca, did you? Did you?
No.
Okay. So, seeing no further discussion on this, um, I did wanna just take a quick point of privilege and recognize we are appointing several individuals to, uh, different boards and commissions, and I know that we do have one with us tonight, uh, that, that, I'm sorry, I don't know, uh, if there are others in here. But Lisa Harrison, Lisa Garza Haras- Harrison, uh, will be representing District 5 on the Library Advisory Board. So thank you, and, uh, if we can give a round of applause for Ms. Harrison. We don't usually get, uh, a lot of our appointees joining us at the meeting, so we appreciate you being here and appreciate you serving on the library board, um, if this resolution passes. So, with that, I'll close the floor, and if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Passes 5-0. That concludes the consent agenda. And there are no withdrawals this evening, so we'll move on to Item Number 9, Adoption of Ordinance Amendments to County Code. Madam Clerk, could you please provide ordinance numbers for Items A, B, and C?
Yes. Item 9A is ordinance 2025-18. 9B is ordinance 2025-19, and 9C is ordinance 2025-20.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So Item A, we have a, uh, ordinance for project revenue bonds on the Encino, Encino Senior Gardens. And we have Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So first up, we're talking about the Encino Senior Gardens, which is an affordable housing project. This is a project revenue bond, which is a tool that, um, housing developers are able to use low-income housing tax credits, mixed in with a property tax exemption that we provide. This project, um, is on Alvarado and Zuni, right across the way from the CARES campus. The Commission had already approved, uh, the, um, bonds for this, uh, project, which wa- is gonna refurbish 165 units of existing housing stock, that is 100% Section 8. But the, um, the project ran into a challenge with, they had only, uh, used 19.2 of the $24 million of bonds that were allocated. And so because of that, we have to come back and reauthorize the ordinance again, so that way they can use the additional 4.8 million that they have been allocated. This is due to unforeseen costs when tearing into walls and the rising cost of construction and supply chain challenges as well. So once again, this is, uh, 100% tax exemption on the property for a term of 30 years. And all we're approving tonight is saying that they can use, uh, 4.8 million of the 24 million that the county had already approved. And I'd like to note that Chris Stanley from Encino, um, Gardens is here this evening. Should there be any additional questions from the Commission. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much Director. Any questions? We will now convene a public hearing. Uh, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no sign-ups for the public hearing item.
Okay, very good. Uh, that conclude, oh, yes, that concludes the public hearing. And now, uh, do we have a motion on the ordinance?
Yeah, I'd like to move, um, approval for this item.
Second. And then, did you want to say?
Yeah, just to say thank you Marcos for always bringing, I think folks know this has been before, before, but the Encino Senior Gardens is, um, you know, the more we make living for seniors, respectful and with dignity, and I'm really appreciative, ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you Madam Vice Chair. Any other discussion or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor, and, uh, Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt, Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. That passes on a 5-0 vote. And we'll go on to Item B, the Industrial Revenue Bond Ordinance for the Highway Hotel. Director Gonzalez.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair and, and members of the Commission. Once again, this is approval of a industrial revenue bond, which is a tool used by projects to, um, defer a portion of the taxes, and they pay a payment in lieu of taxes. And because of that, they're able to make the capital stack and the cash flow work for the project. The Highway Hotel will be a brand-new 112-room hotel, where the former Highway Hotel on Central and Bryn Mawr was. This will, uh, feature, uh, New Mexico artisans inside with fresh art, and will have a, a restaurant and bar and space for a retail as well. From, in terms of public engagement, the, um, they've received their zoning verification letter, and the developer has discussed, uh, with the Neighborhood Association, the Business Association, the Nob Hill Main Street, and all have been positive comments and happy to see that the area is gonna be revitalized, and that new people will be attracted to the Nob Hill area and to spend money out into the area as well. They will be adhering to our standard IRB reporting requirements, and, um, once again, this is approval of a $34 million IRB for real property and personal property tax exemption for a term of 25 years. And they will have 16 full-time, um, permanent jobs created and 68, uh, part-time jobs created. And during the construction, plan to have 168, uh, jobs created as well. Ian Robinson from Titan Development is here this evening. Should you have any directed questions? Other than that, I'll stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you Director. We will now convene a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you Chair, we don't have any speakers, uh, signed up for this item.
Very good, thank you. That will conclude the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move approval for IRB ordinance for the Highway Hotel.
Thank you Madam Vice Chair, I'll second. And any discussion or comments, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you Chair. Um, again, I'd like to just, um, thank you Marcos, Director Marcos, for, um, doing your work to bring more, um, good stuff into our communities. You know, um, Nob Hill, a lot of people th- think of it as, um, that it's fun and lots of stuff. We've actually had lots of things closed also, even in the Nob Hill area. So this is a good, um, development for the community, um, keep, so thanks for bringing it forward. And I'd like to encourage my colleagues to vote in favor.
Any other comments? I would just say, I, I think this is a great project. If you think about what was there before, uh, it was a building that had caught on fire multiple times. I believe there was, you know, encampments inside of this building. It was really a, an eyesore in one of the most popular and vibrant districts of the city. And now you have a, a brand-new boutique hotel there. And there are so many incredible local businesses around this site, both on Central, but the other ones we don't always think of, off of Silver, right behind here. There's a thriving, uh, little small business district. So, uh, I can just see where all of these, primarily tourists, are gonna be supporting our local businesses, our local economy. So this is great, and, uh, and I just wanted to give one more shout-out, because we're kind of on the subject, to, um, the other local hotel in the area, Hotel ZAZ, which I just heard the other night, the incredible story of the ownership of that hotel, and what they've done to revitalize that and, and create a really unique boutique hotel in, um, one of our most popular places in the city. So I think this is great, and thank you to.
Now Oregon's not the only place that has cute fancy things.
All right, uh, we'll close the floor, and if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes on a 5-0 vote. And then Item C, uh, project revenue bond ordinance for West Mesa Ridge, and Director Gonzalez again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Uh, this is a final adoption of the project revenue bond for West Mesa Ridge. Like to point out that Michelle Demblicher from YES Housing, and Kristy Donaldson and Michael Kates from Chelsea Housing Development are on Zoom. Should we have any questions for them? Uh, project revenue bonds, again, as with Encino, is a development tool that allows, uh, folks that are doing the 4% income, 4, 4% low-income housing tax credit, the ability to access the tax credits and the volume cap through the state of New Mexico and tax exemption. Uh, West Mesa Ridge A, um, is a 128 apartment unit for new construction, so up to 448 new re- new residents could be housed. And the median income is, uh, sparred from the, spared from, um, 30% up to 80%. So it's gonna be a range of mixed incomes that are gonna be living at the property site. And just for clarification, this is a quick overview of the median incomes that you can see from households from 30% to 80% per household. This is gonna be located at, uh, Coors and Fortuna. And, um, once again, this is a low-income housing tax credit project and a volume cap project. And there's been a host of other fund- And there's been a host of other funds that are going into this project as well, from housing in New Mexico and the city of Albuquerque as well, and possibly the state of New Mexico. They plan to break ground in twenty twenty-five, July of twenty twenty-five, and probably about a two-year construction period. So this is a thirty-year term, one hundred percent tax exemption on the property. And without this product, without this incentive, the project would not be able to move forward. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Questions? Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I'm of approval, to start with.
I'll second.
And I just wanted to say, thank you, Marcos, thank you, Yes Housing. I think this is a good example of a well-thought-out affordable housing project in partnership, hopefully three-way partnership with the state engaging as well. And I do have a question, Marcos. You did reach out to the Neighborhood Associations in this area, or Yes Housing did. Is that, that's my understanding, and we have a?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca, yes, as part of their land use process, they reached out to the neighbors as well. And they also reached out, talking about the aesthetics as well, and then Yes Housing actually employs master gardeners as well. And so just like many of their other projects where they have gardening projects, they plan to have one at this site as well for demonstration gardens for growing food, and then also for the beautification of the area as well.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez, and I urge your support. Great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca, and we'll keep the floor open, but we jumped ahead a little bit. We got to convene the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speaker signed up for this item.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public hearing, and we already have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right, item ten is adoption of resolutions. This will be the final hearing for these items. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for items ten A, ten B, and ten C?
Yes, item ten A is AR twenty twenty-five dash fifty-four. Ten B is AR twenty twenty-five dash fifty-five. And ten C is FR twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And first up, we have the second hearing of the Workforce Pre-Aprentice and Job Internship Program for Young Adults. Deputy County Manager Sidya White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before you this evening is a motion to approve for a final approval of the administrative resolution establishing a program for workforce pre-apprentice and job internship program. On May thirteenth, the proposed administrative resolution was introduced requesting the establishment of the program. As previously presented, the purpose of the proposed program is to create a workforce development initiative for young adults from historically underserved communities, focusing on providing access and career readiness to sustainable careers in outdoor education and natural resource management while enhancing local ecosystems. The goals are to address workforce shortages, provide paid training and hands-on job experience, and creating sustainable career pathways. The proposed program will address workforce economic gaps. The current workforce challenges are shortage of skilled workers in climate resilience and natural resource management, and young adults facing limited access to career-building opportunities and struggling to transition into stable employment. The Human Resources Department, if approved, will lead the one-year proposed pilot program in partnership with the county's parks, recreation, and open space, and technical service departments, and local partners. The workforce and internship program will also promote community and environmental benefits by investing in our public spaces and natural resources, such as workforce preparedness and water resources, land management, wildfire mitigation, tree restoration, and urban forestry, while supporting county-wide sustainability and conservation efforts. Another benefit is building resilient communities by empowering young adults with traditional ecological knowledge integrated with modern conservation methods, and creating and building a skilled, resilient, and local labor force. In addition to addressing workforce challenges, the proposed program will benefit having access to a skilled talent pipeline for environmental and sustainability roles, strengthening county-wide climate resilience initiatives, creating long-term economic opportunities for historically underserved young adults. Lastly, contributing to the county's broader commitment to economic development, workforce stability, and empowerment of young adults. The monetary commitment of the administrative resolution is two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand for a one-year pilot program to support the implementation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I stand for questions.
Any questions? I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second from Vice Chair Barboah. I'd like to start off the discussion here just by saying and expressing my great appreciation to our partners in the community who presented a problem to us, right, talking to us about, you know, the shortage of access to opportunities and, you know, the ability to ladder into these career fields, particularly in natural resources, environmental, storage ship, land management, the lack of that ladder, that opportunity to enter, much less succeed, right? And lo and behold, we realized that that problem that was presented from the community's perspective also really intertwined with a problem that we have at the county, right, which is lack of workforce. It's not always in the exact same positions, but oftentimes it is, and we heard earlier today about workforce challenges in the treasurer's office. A little different than what we're talking about right now, but nevertheless, right? And so we're seeing this mismatch between what we have at the county, the career opportunities that are available, and the pathways and access that the community has into that. And I think the same is true, the city of Albuquerque, state of New Mexico, but not just in government, as somebody that works in the private sector, the same is true there. And so I want to just commend our county manager, Cindy Chavez, from very early on, brought her into this project, and she has been incredibly supportive and, you know, dove right into this and wanted to accept the challenge to try and do better here, better by our community and better by our workforce. And shortly after, brought in Deputy County Manager Sidya White and several others in leadership in the organization to talk about this problem and look for a solution. And so I think we've got a pilot here that really has a promising future, I think. And what I think is really cool about this, I alluded to this last time, but the city of Albuquerque, in their budget hearing last week, passed a very similar resolution, very similar program, allocating four hundred thousand dollars to the city for the same type of program. And Councilor Feeble Corn and I have been talking about this from the beginning. She actually gets a lot of the credit, along with the community. I know you all talked to her too. And so we've been working together on this, and I think there's incredible opportunity for us to share resources, access the same talent pipeline, and hopefully improve our own workforce conditions, but also for the private sector and nonprofits and everyone else who works in this incredibly important space in the environmental resource field. So I'm just incredibly grateful to all the partners we've had in this. It really does take a whole team, and everybody came together and rallied around this. So I would just encourage all my colleagues' support. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just am really excited about this pilot program. I think someone said earlier when we were talking about foster care and about how kids, I don't know if that's where we were talking about it, but kids thrive in the outdoors. And this is the opportunity to have young adults find their calling and to build the next stewards of our land. So this is really, really important to me, to be able to give the opportunity for people to, you know, get into the outdoors. And in so many different ways, it's helpful, the sustainability of our environment, but also the sustainability of our workforce and our community. So I will be supporting it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners, Madam Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing this. Thanks to all the folks here advocating on behalf of it. I'm really excited to see this program continue to grow wider, deeper. I'm reminded of our service corps. I was just meeting with some folks the other day, right, that I know our county parks and recs have worked with to do some, I'm looking forward to those collaborations with the projects that you all will be creating and dreaming of and working closely with our folks, who we have these great, Burnley County is a great store to a lot of lands with our open space projects and trails. And I think there's so much to be shared and learned and grow upon there. I was just talking to some folks that we do, the youth service corps, that has done some of that work on a very limited level. But they're losing federal funding now, too. And so, and they just reached out to me last week. I would cry about thinking about it, but because I was a service corps member, right, that those opportunities, folks always talk about, like, what it, I think those opportunities reached me as a young person. I was labeled as an at-risk youth, right, and so opportunities like that, to work with service corps, were transformational, and I got access not only to new skills, but also to a community of people. Almost like a lot of folks that get to go to colleges have fraternities or sororities. You almost build a community and network of people that are going to be here, and I've learned I get to keep coming back and meeting them again and seeing what everybody's doing. So I just thank you for the work, not only to build stewards of our environment and our, but also to build a network of people really fighting for our land, water, and the health of our communities. So thank you. Stephanie Sopar.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And one last thing I wanted to point out, I mentioned the city outlayed four hundred thousand, this is for two fifty. But what's not said in this resolution is the positions within the county that the county manager has made available in addition to that resource, making available internship positions. So that is in addition to this outlay. So I think, I just wanted to put that in perspective, that in all reality, the fiscal commitment is probably about the same. And then on top of that, I mentioned last time, I'll be putting in some of my District Five directed funds to this. So I think that we are absolutely attempting to meet the need partially and matching what the resource that the city's put in. So thank you to all my colleagues, and with that, we will close the floor. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
I apologize. Can you repeat that, Commissioner?
Yeah, I apologize too. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have community services with the liquor lax, liquor license tax in the unincorporated area. And just a reminder, this is an item that we voted for immediate action because of the nature of the request, which will be explained to us shortly.
I have no idea. I can't see this, it's too small. Margaritas is going to come save the day. I just need better glasses, I guess. Oh, sorry, there it is. My bad. Thank you. After I made her walk all the way to, she did a lot of work though. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. There we go. I'm here tonight to present the annual renewal of the liquor license tax that is afforded to the county under state statute. This is a tax that we renew every year by state statute, and the tax dollars do not exceed two hundred and fifty dollars per liquor license that is held within the unincorporated areas of Burnley County. We generally will anticipate about fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from this tax. The tax is used to do public health campaigns around underage drinking and substance misuse during high-risk periods like graduation, summer, and winter break. Currently, we have, we have campaign activities getting ready to launch. We've had a little happening during graduation, but it's really starting to ramp up. We primarily have been focused on adult education and adult behavior change. We are changing that slightly this year to really engage young people's perspective, which will be a full-fledged press next summer in really looking at campaigns that we can track data on, particularly in digital media and on social media platforms, because we can track through evidence-based measures the number of interactions that someone has and what those types of interactions are, and whether or not they lead to behavior change. So we'll be looking at that for the FY twenty-six dollars, which you're approving this evening. We generally change our campaigns every two years, just based on resources. It's not a whole lot of resource that are going into it, so we try to keep the same kind of product with just some updating during our budget cycle, like our two-year budget cycle kind of works out. But next year will look a little bit different. I stand for questions.
All right, thank you, Deputy County Manager Townsend. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I could move for approval.
A second? Did you want to make a comment, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I did want to, but thank you, Dr. Townsend, for bringing this. And I guess I had a couple of questions. Who decided, this largely gets to turn into some of those great ads we see or promotions? We know that messaging has been highly effective in decreasing tobacco use, right? Especially used creatively and in the right way. Is that some, that's where most of these funds go to? Are all these funds going?
Madam Vice Chair, this is a small portion of the many campaigns that we do. But these are very much targeted during those periods of time, but yes.
And then who gets to decide, like, on the messaging or the strategy, and do you have a team that?
Madam Vice Chair, members of the commission, currently, it is our cultural affairs department and marketing that are working on that internally. But if anyone would like to participate and support the decision-making process, we welcome your involvement.
I just wasn't sure, and I want to make sure, and I asked mostly because my first year, not any longer, I pay a lot of attention to our ads because of this, but my very first year, which was five years ago or four years ago, there was some folks from the African community had reached out to say that some of the messaging felt not to par with what, or sort of stigmatizing in some ways. I don't really recall or don't need to go back to that. I disagree. I'm so glad you're at the lead, and I think that making sure we're, you know, double-checking or vetting our messaging through places to make sure we're also not sometimes to par.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, very much so leaning into youth perspectives and adult perspectives that lead to behavior change from an asset-based lens, rather than any type of deficit-based approach.
Thank you so much. And I support it. I think it means so much and has changed a lot, and our communities are ready, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but just kind of a process question. This is kind of a substance use and substance abuse treatment, and I'm used to these falling under the Department of Behavioral Health Services or one of those. Is there a reason why it's in your shop, not to say that it shouldn't be, but I'm just kind of curious? It's this little piece over there.
Mr. Chair, it's because it's a marketing campaign, and cultural affairs and marketing falls under the Parks and Recreation Department.
Gotcha, okay. And then the other comment that I had, I've shared this with DCM Lindstrom, I think, and so I'll share it with you. One of the ideas that I heard, that I thought was a really good idea, is we always do these ride-share codes and these Uber campaigns around Memorial Day, July Fourth. And one that was brought to my attention, I wish I could remember who to give the credit to, was graduations and, you know, times when youth and adults, but youth are drinking and using substances. And granted, we know that, you know, they're not supposed to, we don't want them to, but we know it's happening, and so it's really kind of a harm reduction. Anyway, just throwing that out there, since we're kind of on the subject, and I think I've mentioned that before, but I can't remember if I did. All right, we'll close the floor, and Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you. That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, DCM Townsend, and you're up on the next one as well. And, uh, you're up on the next one as well with Whispering Pines Senior Center Emergency Grant. Mr. John Barney. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Let's see. To start our free trial here. Yeah, let's start our free trial. Control L. Control L. And the world ends. Oh, it worked. Okay. Thank you. Uh, my name is John Barney. I am the planning manager of Parks. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm grateful here to be here, uh, tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just to present to you the motion to approve a financial resolution, FR twenty-two-five fifty-six, budgeting an emergency grant in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars, uh, from the New Mexico, State of New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Department for the Whispering Pines Senior Center. So I also just wanted to thank you, uh, first of all, just for your consideration, support for suspension of the rules to allow for final adoption of this final, this financial resolution. This will allow us to move expeditiously to get these improvements into construction. Um, the funding that we're, um, proposing be budgeted will enable pros to complete construction of upgrades, the water and fire suppression systems at the Whispering Pines Senior Meal Center. In order for it to continue to provide services and programming for seniors at this remote location in the East Mountains well into the future, uh, the upgrades include a new water tank, uh, new pump, and some new fire suppression infrastructure. Uh, we've already been scoping this with our on-call plumbing contractor, so we're really excited to get this into construction as soon as we can. Um, so, or as soon as it is budgeted. So with that, uh, we respectively urge approval of this financial resolution. And thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
I still have questions.
Uh, I would move approval.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you to our pro staff, especially Mr. Barney. Understand you were instrumental in getting this application drafted and sent off to the state and coming back, uh, successfully, very quickly. And to my fellow commissioners, th- this site may not necessarily jog your memory, but it may. Um, I believe many commission meetings ago, we all received packets on our, um, desks. We had speakers that came up and, and talked about this when there were some real challenges at that facility and, uh, and staff was having to really make some hard decisions and think about closures or, uh, what kind of investment it would take to keep the center running. We are keeping it running, obviously. And, uh, they have gone out and found the money to, to do that. And so just a huge kudos to our staff for doing that. It is a very small center in a very remote part of the mountains, but, uh, a really passionate community that uses that and, and has formed a community around that center, which is exactly what we want in these types of facilities. So, thank you for, uh, for finding this resource and putting it to work. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barney, and, um, for all your work and on this is su- super important. Although small, um, Aging and Long-Term Services, uh, with the state, I wanna thank them as well. It's really an important partnership that we're, uh, serving our, our senior community. It's so important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Thank you, members of the commission.
With that, we will close the floor. And, uh, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboah.
Yes.
Cheryl Levas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That passes five zero.
Thank you.
And now we will go on to item eleven, introduction of resolutions. All resolutions require two hearings before final approval, except in cases of, uh, special exemptions like those that we just discussed. Uh, the first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. The public is encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide comments. Uh, the following items will be returned at a subsequent meeting, usually the next meeting, for final adoption consideration. And so first up, we have, uh, item A, Commissioner, uh, Civil Legal Services Fund and, uh, Madam Vice Chair Barboah.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, commissioners. Um, I am proposing this Civil Legal Service Fund, um, asking our county mandarin, our county to, um, either create and/or contribute of, um, to an existing fund for access to justice services in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is really to supplement folks. We know right now folks are going through a lot of legal service needs that they can't, um, afford. We know that, um, even the data shows that New Mexico has a low number of folks being able, um, you know, pro bono hours only goes so far. Um, and so this is really to help folks and would be for those most in need to get legal services. There's been other successfully implemented programs in other jurisdictions to expand civil legal services, including things like legal aid, pro bono por- co- programs, court-based programs, civil legal needs, um, and some specific issue-based programs, government-funded initiatives, and can provide a valuable model for Burnley County. So, um, this is specifically in these times when, um, folks are facing, um, you know, weird, uh, we just, we've been seeing so much happen already from folks, um, losing, not having, um, legal services from when they're losing house or when they need, uh, losing their, um, having rent of cases against them, but also particularly getting, um, having deportation cases in front of them. So I, um, ask for my colleagues to support this for our county to create a, create and/or contribute to existing fund for justice services in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. And, uh, we'll open up the floor. Any questions or discussion? I, I, I do, you know, wanna ask a couple of questions on this, um, or just share some, some thoughts, I guess. Uh, this is, so this is for civil legal services, so we're not talking about, obviously, criminal defenses, all covered by the public defender.
Yes.
That type of thing. Okay.
Yeah, not for crimes. The civil legal services only.
So this could be, um, to, you know, as you mentioned, eviction prevention, those kinds of things, uh, fighting an eviction or such things. Um, I guess what I'm concerned about or just wondering how, how we put any kind of safeguards is sort of, um, I feel like our legal system is, is really jammed up with a lot of lawsuits and some of those we're involved in as, as a county ourselves. But, um, you know, there's a lot of lawsuits out there and there's a lot of people that are, like, living off of lawsuits. They're, they're sort of, you know, looking for situations where they can find a lawsuit and, and sue someone to, um, get money for themselves, their families. And, and, you know, I mean, that's, that's the way our legal system works and we want people to be compensated if they're harmed by negligence or neglect or foul play, whatever. Um, but I just sort of worry a little bit about us getting into the business of, um, sort of helping people fund lawsuits. It's one thing if it's evictions, maybe, um, but I, I don't know. I just, I'm wondering if you, I'd...
No, I appreciate...
First time I'm telling you this, so I'm just kinda wondering if you have any comment.
Yeah, no, I totally appreciate the question. I, I think what's important, right, to think of, and I've shared the story about like my son and his apartment complex many times, that was not, um, redoing the, the water heater. They didn't have a heater for over a year. And so we bought them little heaters, closed up rooms with blankets so they could stay warm. Um, and he was calling his landlord over and over and over again, right, but not able to get any. So he probably still, because he doesn't have any dependents and him and his partner are, um, you know, work full-time, so he probably wouldn't have qualified for this fund. But there are many like him going through that same thing with, like, their landlords or for various reasons, that they don't have somebody to defend them. So he didn't, he tried legal aid, he'd made too much money. But there's, um, things like that happening all the time where folks are get, um, in civil legal services. And if you don't have somebody to defend you, then you're just on this pure bureaucratic. You walk in, a judge makes a decision, maybe you speak to somebody that can help you, but, or you just don't even have, um, the, the help, period. So this is really what we're seeing more recently is, um, and what this is, um, is to address is like people being picked up. In fact, one of, I just got a text from one of our friends that was in the audience that, um, yeah, someone from their staff, a citizen, had been picked up and detained. He was let go within a few hours. But should folks like that not have a community that can pull together and gather their resources to afford a lawyer for them? That's what we're talking about. That's we have, that people who can't afford somebody for civil legal services, that, that they would have somebody to defend them.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. And, and, uh, if I may, just a, a follow-up question, I'll jump to you, Commissioner Baca. Um, for you or for county manager? So the, the resolution doesn't really set up sort of the criteria for this and that may be by design, by intention. But, you know, I'm wondering, is this something that we're gonna limit to evictions and landlord-type stuff? Um, or is it something that's gonna be open-ended? And then, you know, you mentioned income qua- income qualifications and, you know, that's another area of sort of just wondering, you know, there are other places that are available, but they may be, you make too much money. Um, and I can, I, I can understand the need to, to an extent, I, I'd to share just a really silly example. But for me, I had a client that just didn't pay me and it wasn't a lot of money. It was just a very small amount of money and I went in and filed a suit and that was it because I had, I had no idea what I was doing. Um, I probably wouldn't have qualified necessarily for this kind of thing, but I, I'm just wondering, is this just focused on housing or is this, you know, who is this available to and how will we gate it? And, and, uh, just make sure that it's going where we want it to go.
Well, I'll start it and then the county manager can, um, definitely back me up or speak on behalf of the county. Um, so, yes, I think we're trying to leave this broad. This was actually brought to me by community members because they're seeing an increased need. Um, and, uh, so there, um, we're asking to either a contribution to an existing fund. So we have learned that there's a couple of existing funds and what they already have the system in place, right, that get, has the lawyers that are ready to do the work, that can, and then a place where, where people are sort of vetted through a community project so that they can, um, to assess the need, to assess that it's a civil legal service that's in, in the need and that that move through. The, this would also mean that some of that, a hot, they're proposing a hotline so folks can call and have access, um, when they need it to, to see if they qualify for funds. Um, but that's some of the ways that, um, it, the, the requi- the biggest requirement is that it be a civil legal issue. And I'm sure people would have to make, uh, we're not, um, declaring that, right, but people would have to, um, you know, we wouldn't have, uh, wealthy people getting the, they would have to qualify on it.
Thank you, um, for the question. My, the follow-up to this is that it was intended, um, based on the vice chair's, uh, directive to defend and not sue. So I think the first point that you're raising is a really important one. Um, the second is that if you moved forward and gave us, um, direction, we would align this with other programs that are targeted to low-income and extremely low-income members of our community who are at significant risk right now. That is what the in, the, um, intention was as we supported the drafting of this document.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to comment in regards to, um, your questions and, and the types of losses that you initially mentioned, uh, you referred to that you were concerned about. Normally, based on my mi- years of experience, that would normally be a different type of a, a financial arrangement with the client. Normally it would be a percentage or contingency-based contract as opposed to this type of where somebody would go in and seek, uh, advice and counsel perhaps as indicated by county manager to defend. Uh, the other thing, just in general about legal services in this state and probably in the country, you know, many, many, many years ago, when I, I started in my, my law career as a, in private practice, the legal aid was a booming law firm. It was competitive to get in those jobs. There were probably, I don't know, kind of, uh, county attorney may be able to supplement my answer to this, but there were probably thirty, maybe forty lawyers in Albuquerque alone. It was a booming law firm and with tons of resources and they really provided a great service to the community. That has been whittled away over the years, not just the last few years, but over many years. I know it still exists and, and when I was in private practice, so even when I wasn't. And I'm always trying to, to find, uh, referral sources for people to get legal advice, to get, you know, uh, just get questions answered. And so I don't know, um, that there's, uh, you know, that this will even be a, you know, be honest with you, a drop-in bucket for the need is out there for representation and, 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 and not always representation, but a lot of times it's just a question, a matter of having somebody who can ask a question and get an answer to a very specific, uh, topic. And when I was in, in, in private practice, I, I found that, that most, a lot of my, my consultations were just a matter of just referring people to the right resource, not necessarily taking the case or representing. But somebody come in with this situation, said, this is the type of lawyer you need to have, this type of organization. So I think this, 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 uh, type of fund is a good thing and, uh, and should be available because, uh, there is a great need. As we talked a lot about, you know, medical service, mental health service and legal services are also, um, important and, uh, and there's oftentimes, uh, out of the price range for the average, you know, working person or the person that's not making, that's why I would support the motion.
All right. Uh, other commissioners? I'm gonna s- I'm gonna support the, the introduction because, you know, I don't, I don't, I think we should see where this plays out. But I would like to, if, if county staff would follow up with me, maybe with, um, if you could just link me to some of those other funds or, or Commissioner Barboah, just so I could get an idea of kind of what they're doing and how these, this works, just my own naivety on, on this issue, not, not my area of expertise. So I'd, I'd like to learn a little bit more because I just wanna make sure that we're not, um, we're not in any way enabling bad behavior. I wanna make sure that we're protecting people that are, you know, victims of, of, uh, of others or of a system that's not working. But I wanna make sure we're not enabling things that, that we don't wanna see. So, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Yeah. Um, and close the, if no other questions or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you. Um, I had a follow-up question. What, and, and, uh, Commissioner Frank Baca, uh, with your experience, you can answer this as well, or Barboah, um, Commissioner Barboah. But, uh, what are, what is the prevalence of nonprofits who do this kind of work? I've got a similar concern as Commissioner Levas, uh, Cheryl Levas. Um, and I know that, I know that, you know, the legal industry is one of the largest industries in New Mexico as far as a single, uh, industry, especially in terms of their, uh, political clout, especially in Santa Fe. So, um, yeah, just curious what the, uh, are there, are there nonprofits that are doing what the purpose of this, uh, um, of the goal of this, uh, proposal is? Uh, Commissioner Barboah.
Um, yes, I mean, there are nonprofits such as, um, the, God, we've been naming it this whole time, New Mexico Legal Aid, um, Immigrant Law Center, I believe Pegasus, which represents youth. Um, those are all places that would, uh, do you know of others? Thanks for your help.
Um, Mr. Chair, I may...
Commissioner Frank.
And not, I think you named it the three that I, I'm aware of. And actually, I was at a legal seminar a couple of weeks ago trying to catch up on all my, uh, CLEs that I'm required to have. Um, and it was sponsored by the New Mexico Trial Lawyers Association, who, again, they work on a contingency fee cases. And so these types of cases don't normally code to people that do this type of work, right? But, um, but there was a presentation, a very impressive and, and, uh, presentation by a, a nonprofit organization. And I, I think it was New Mexico Immigrant Law Rights or something like that, I'm not sure. But, um, very impassionately... But um very impassionately uh for resources. And there were apparently a lot of attorneys in that room that had donated their time and and pro bono uh situations to to consult. But yeah, I I and and I know that I have a friend that works part time at the the senior assistant law office, but they they charge nominal fees. So I think there's a number of organizations out there that are, you know, low cost or 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 free. But the problem is that there's just not enough of them and it's just enough enough uh access to that type of a resource. So it's just a need that we have in the community be. But yeah, if you get a correct, and you're gonna find about a dozen law firms are gonna be sending you a letter in the mail and you're gonna see about that many commercials in the next twenty four hours that someone's gonna be realizing need that type of law. And I I don't think, I don't gather this is the type of legal representation that this funding is designed for.
Commissioner Benson, did you have a follow up?
Um thank you, Mr. Chair. I I I definitely appreciate the heart of this endeavor. But I I am concerned about the um and I'm and I don't necessarily question the need, but I don't know that it's a good use of of our taxpayers' dollars to to fund this need. Yeah, I I assume this will pass and I'm curious for more information, but I respectfully don't think I can support it tonight. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the floor and if we could get a roll call vote for introduction.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
No.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes on a four one vote. So we'll see that again at our probably at our next meeting. And item B, we have the PB and J Early Childhood Education Center presented by Commissioners Frank Baca and Barbara Baca.
If I could start, Mr. Chair. Um we have heard some eloquent speakers this evening. Um former Commissioner Maggie Hart Stevens and Senator Debbie O'Malley in her sit- in in her absence. But and Angie Vatio, thank you so much for being here and what you've done in founding this organization. And so what's before us today is to put a priority on completion of the construction of PB and J Early Childhood Center. And it is, a- as Ms. Vatio described, this is a very unique organization that for fifty years has been not only educating um children, but families in need. And the approach of the holistic approach of helping families is what really got my attention when I first started on the commission, went down and looked at the site. And it literally is a hundred year old building falling down around their ears. And so it was really exciting that we got some funding to do phase one. And now we are in the pro- process. But what makes most sense is to continue this and place a priority on it to bridge over and complete uh and move into phase two. And it'll actually be a cost savings. And so what what I what um Commissioner Frank Baca and I did is work with the county manager on developing this resolution. And I do have a slight uh floor amendment um that I will I will um offer. But I move approval, have I done that yet? Move approval, first of all, um Commissioner Baca.
Second. All right, we have a second. Second from Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yeah. And um my my small floor amendment is is actually on the the signature page, um line nine. We say utilizing funds, uh and it should be from the Behavioral Health Authority Division. Right now it says Department of, and we want to make sure that we're accurate. And that's I checked with Dr. Lindstrom and that would be the accurate uh language to use on that line. So I move that amendment.
Second.
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 Second from Vice Chair Barboa. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, oh, we lost our clerk for just a minute. So if you could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner.
A roll call vote on the amendment, sorry.
On the amendment, Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes five zeros. So the amendment is adopted to the underlying resolution. Back to the sponsors.
Commissioner Baca, do you have anything to?
Um yeah, just a few words. Um I will say that there are there are a lot of advocates for this organization. Appreciate Commissioner Baca co-sponsoring this and certainly uh former Commissioner Maggie Hart Stevens that was here earlier and and uh former Commissioner Ann S. O'Malley. And I think most and foremost, Ms. Angie Vatio, who has already spoken, introduced it, very diligent. So I might say persistent. And her advocacy over probably all fifty three years, right? Pretty close to that, maybe a little bit of breaking sort of, but but very strong advocate. Um I would just like to say my um my experience with PB and J goes back almost that period of time because the building is about block and a half, maybe two blocks away where I was born and raised in a piece of property that, you know, that our family still owns. So I'm very familiar with it. But my real experience came from, as a young lawyer, I represented, uh I was involved in cases involving CYFD. And I was assigned by the courts to to represent many times children as a guardian of item. But uh more often, for whatever reason, I was assigned cases to represent the respondents in the cases or the parents. And those are very, very difficult and sometimes heartbreaking cases. Um I litigated those cases vigorously. I had up to the Court of Appeals several times on those cases. And um and they were very difficult and challenging situation. I can't remember how many times when I was in those cases that the recommendation of the order the court was to go to PB and J. And so the parents would go to PB and J for services. And that was always, from my perspective, a hopeful, optimistic thing, that they had a chance to unite the family because I knew they were getting good professional services. So uh as Commissioner Barbara Baca said, we're uh this, the point of this resolution is to to prioritize the the construction and to designate a funding source. Um and I would just like to add that although the the program has landed the test of time, the building has not. And it is in great need of uh of a new, um you know, new s- location. So I just wholeheartedly support this and ask other commissioners do the same.
I would just support.
All right, uh other commissioners? Commissioner, Vice Chair Barboa.
Yeah, I just mostly wanted to say, yeah, I to- I'm excited about this, I support it. I love, uh Angie Vatio is definitely a mentor for our community and our, but has been in the fight. And when I was a case manager, definitely looked to, and it was the only and probably still the only, if not a very few, that work and aren't afraid to work with our incarcerated people and realize the humanity in that and that we need reunification, that children without their parents is not good for any of our community, for those kids, the parents or and or the rest of our community. And I just wanted to note that um several years back, many remember that the West Mesa, a lot of us referred to them as the West Mesa Women. There was a mass gravesite of thirteen women found on the West Mesa. And those we had brought together. I used to be executive director of an organization called Young Women United. And we had brought together the families of those um men, those women who had been found in the West Mesa there. And um, you know, they were suffering, obviously, in their grief and children of those women or family members and parents and grandparents. And there was a whole fa- mix of families and communities that were suffering. And um PB and J came in and said, we will provide group counseling and individual counseling for any and all of these folks for free. And that was what's needed. And those communities came together and were able to receive um group counseling. And a lot of their children received ongoing counseling or referrals to other places. Um so I just really appreciate that they're always just like, you know, nobody really even asked them to be there. They showed up on their own because they knew that the need was going to be there. So definitely support this building. Thank you, Angie, for all your years of service and and for all the folks that work there to make it such a strong organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I would just say, uh fresh off of a of a tour of our Metropolitan Detention Center, thank you, Warden and Legal, all the folks involved in that. Um I think this is, this kind of connects with that. And though this is a nonprofit, we own the building, they operate it. Um it's very interconnected with what you just heard all my colleagues say with with our detention facility and the folks that are, you know, temporary visitors there. And so, you know, we need to, one of our biggest challenges, right, is reintegrating folks in that facility, whether they're there a couple of days or a year, they're not supposed to be there much longer than that. But um getting them back into our society in a productive way. And of course, that starts with their home life, right? Of course, we want them to be working and, you know, educating themselves, being productive members of the community in all those ways. But, you know, it starts at home, right? What are their their family skills, their their parenting skills, all those kinds of things? And so to me, I think this is just the basics and it's an example of the county investing in reintegration, investing in rejuvenation, rebirth, whatever you want to call it. Um and so even though we're not necessarily investing in, you know, hiring staff or something like that, sometimes there's others in the community that they've got the recipe, they know how to do it, and we just need to support them. And so um commend my colleagues for for making this a priority. And I think that I've advocated, not for this project for a long time, but for in general, when we approach capital projects, focusing on doing uh less things with more resources, rather than trying to do more things with less resources. Because what ends up happening is you get a project like this where every year they have to go back to the state legislature hat in hand and and beg for another five hundred thousand, a million dollars. And the legislature's been very generous with with this, with these folks. But there's no way to fund a multimillion dollar project um on these very small capital outlay contributions. It 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 takes a focus. And and we, as a county, as a commission, I think we've gotten better about it, but we've got to continue to narrow the funnel and focus on fewer projects with more resources, right? Finish the project, then move on to the next one, rather than opening up ten different projects and throwing a little bit of money at every one of them, which is basically how we've operated for a long time. We're not the only government that does that. I think all of them do that. And I just don't think it's a good fiscal practice and it doesn't benefit our community when you have these facilities in disrepair that provide an important service. So that's my my soapbox on that one. Do you all want to say anything else? All right, we'll close the floor. And if we could get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. That passes on a five zero vote. See that in June. Thank you, thank you for being here. All right, item D, the project revenue bond transfer of the lease for Silver Moon and La Cantera. Director Marcos Gonzalez to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and uh Chairman. And this is for the lease transfer of existing affordable housing projects. Uh Silver Moon, which is just down the street from here on Park and Central and La Cantera on the west side at Old Airport Road. And I'll let you know that uh David White from Guardian Real Estate is on Zoom should we need him. Um essentially, these are two existing affordable housing projects, similar to West Mesa Ridge. And in Sino, they both were project revenue bond projects. Um that was done um in two thousand six and I believe in in twenty thirteen. And um essentially, the current owner, GSL Properties, is selling both properties to Guardian uh Real Estate. Um and this just allows for the transfer to happen, for the tax exemption to continue. And uh both projects will remain affordable and the uh for the hundred and fifty one units for Silver Moon and the hundred and eighty five units for La Cantera. Um the residents will stay in place and once again will be kept affordable. So we are approv- approving um the transfer for the I for the lease to transfer from GSL over to Guardian. And uh with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Um well, I can move for approval and then.
Okay, uh we have a motion for approval from the Vice Chair, I'll second.
Yeah, and then uh my comments, questions, uh thank you, Chair. Um Marcos, uh Director Gonzalez, when, so this will remain for the remainder of the lease. I guess I just always get a little worried when there's transfer of, um what is it? What do we do or how do we ensure that like the quality, the care, that the, I mean, obviously, they'll have to keep them affordable. But I always just worry about like someone coming in, oh, saying, great, this property is affordable, I could just ignore it. And um so what what do we have in place to ensure that not just that it's affordable, but it remains dignified living?
Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair. So all the reporting requirements that are still owed to HUD and to the tax credit investors and to different investors for the project are still going to be done by the new owner. So they'll still have to keep those standards up. Um this is going to be, Guardian Real Estate is a new developer to uh New Mexico, but they have worked with GSL in the past. And they plan to eventually um do um facelifts to uh actually the properties. Um that's not part of of this um lease transfer right here. But eventually, they've um have discussed about how they plan to um invest more into uh New Mexico.
Okay, thank you. And I I guess, does those, do those HUD uh requirements include a way that we can know that they they remain dignified? I guess like this, that they don't let go of the property right now.
Um Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair, yes, that they not let go of the property. And then also, uh we get certain of reporting, uh requirements um as as well from the State Board of uh Finance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the floor. Um Madam Kurt, could you please call a roll?
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Thank you. That passes on a five zero vote. Thank you, Director. Next up, next up, we have the Rental Assistance Demonstration Fair Market Rent Payment Standards and Director Amanda Coburn to present.
Hello. All right. Chair Olivas, Members of the Commission, Amanda Coburn, Housing Director. Um the item before you this evening is the introduction of the administrative resolution for the twenty five twenty six Rental Assistance Demonstration or RAD Fair Market Rents and Payment Standards. Um housing and urban urban development require housing authorities to update their fair market rents on an annual basis. Um we bring our fair market rents to you twice a year. Um in January, we bring for our general housing choice voucher program. And then now in June, or May, I'm sorry, we bring forward the fair market rents for our RAD properties. Once approved, these uh fair market rents will go into effect in for September lease renewals. So RAD was created to give housing authorities a tool to move public housing units into a section eight model and platform, making the units project based and an opportunity to utilize other rehabilitation funding options. Um these are for our twenty one units at Sable Village, um which those are our RAD properties. The classification ensures that the units will remain permanently affordable to low income households. Uh the increase for this year is five point three percent, um which is for HUD's twenty twenty five operating costs or OCAP, allowing Sable Village rents to remain well below market value rents for Burnley, O County. So um just kind of a visual is the rents will go um five point three percent up for this year. So um that is our presentation for you and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Questions, Commissioners? Do we have a motion? Uh Vice Chair.
Um I have a question. I guess um so can you go back this one slide? And these are, you're saying that these are HUD approved and that's why we're able to make the the increase of five point three?
Vice Chair, yes. So um each year HUD releases the new fair market red rents for RAD properties. So what you're looking at is the top line is for twenty twenty four. And then with the five point three percent, which is what the new, the difference between the two is, um what HUD gave us for twenty twenty five is that like for a one bedroom, five oh eight to five thirty six. So we're equal, and it's still well below market rate.
Oh, this is still well below, okay.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I could see that. Okay, and um yeah, thank you. And if I may, just Chair, I mean, I hopefully this will increase the number of landlords willing to accept vouchers.
So.
Or that not?
Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barboa, so no, this, these. Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barboa, so no, this, these rents are specific to our RAD property, which is Sable Village, the twenty-one units that are adjacent to El Centro Familiar. So it's their project-based voucher. So these twenty-one vouchers stay in the twenty-one units at Sable Village. So this allows us to keep them super affordable for families with, with a family member who has a disability. And so they will always stay well below market rate for their, and well, well below affordable.
Okay, great. So this is going, so who gets the increase? The land, there's still a landlord that gets the...
That's us.
The county.
The county.
Great, okay.
That would be us.
Because I would be like, why do we keep helping the landlords and not helping the people? Yay. So, okay, this, thank you.
And, and really, the, the portion that the tenant pays has very little change. It's really the portion that HUD reimburses us for our voucher.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for that, Clarence.
Did you want to do a motion?
Oh, I moved to approve.
Second. Commissioner Frank Baca, just a quick question. I'm assuming that they're all a hundred percent occupied?
Yes, sir. Chair Olivas, Commissioner Baca, yes. We, actually, we have one vacancy, and it's in the process of being filled right now.
And what is your waiting list at any given time?
For our Sable Village and El Centro, right now, we just reopened the waiting list, and I think we have about two hundred families on each.
Thank you. Two hundred families for twenty units?
So two hundred families for seventy-five units. Where we stand with our units is their first, El Centro Familiar is for senior families or senior individuals, and Sable Village is for families with disabilities. Once we get a tenant in, they're there for life. So it's very rare that we have people move out of the property.
Very good. And the tenants pay these amounts to the county?
No.
What's on the screen?
No, sir. So, Chair Olivas, so this is the payment standard for the rent, and then it's calculated that they pay a portion of that. And then a half payment from HUD covers the rest of it.
Oh, wow. Okay. So this is very affordable, because this is the total rent. HUD pays part of this, and then the, the tenant pays a percentage.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, these are very affordable units. Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll close the floor. And Madam Clerk, if we could get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes. Passes on a five-zero vote. And our last item of the evening, the Metropolitan Detention Center introducing medical services and medication-assisted treatment funding request, and Warden Smith to present.
Thank you, Chair Olivas, fellow commissioners. Tonight, I'm here for the introduction of a financial resolution increasing the healthcare gross receipt tax for the Metropolitan Detention Center Medical Contract Budget in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. In addition, the Medical Healthcare Authority Fund in the amount of one million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and two cents for the MATS program at the MDC. You were provided a packet with this request, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you very much, Warden. Any questions? Madam Vice Chair.
I move for approval.
Second. Any discussion or questions, Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Warden, for bringing this. I was looking in, what, I guess I see UNMH will provide true-up actual costs. What does true-up actual costs mean?
So when the quarter closes out, they'll get all the bills, get them over to us, and then we'll, we'll do the funding, see if we got the funding, or tonight, like, we're requesting additional funds. So true-up is just closing out the books for that quarter.
Okay, and are we seeing, I, I, I feel like, you know, the, the ability or the requirement to offer MATS at our jail has been in place for a really long time and hasn't been totally enacted for a really long time. So thank you for the work to making it actually happen. And as we see, do you just see the number, do we anticipate the numbers to continue to go up because we're making it available now?
Yes, it's, Chair Olivas, Vice Chair, it is twofold. One, our population is going up naturally with that, so will the MOUD and the MATS. However, as we explore options to increase both the MATS and the MOUD programs at the facility, we naturally will have that increase. So it's two different reasons it could go up.
Thank you so much. I support this. Thank you for doing the work to make it happen at our job.
I have a comment question. The cost overruns that, that we've seen in the medical program, do we have any, you know, comments on that? How, how we can contain those or, or a few more?
Yes, sir, Chair Olivas. One of the first things that I want to point out is when this contract was signed, the average daily population set was fifteen fifty. Currently, I'm comfortable telling you we're floating around eighteen fifty. However, as of right now, we're at nineteen thirty-four, sixteen beds from full capacity per court order. So the increase is natural to go with the population increase that we've seen. That wasn't anticipated when we signed the contract. And when June came around, when it went, that's generally when we see the population start to increase to what we see today.
I'll just add that, you know, a couple of things. One is that we recognize how important it is that we are as accurate as we can be about the cost and that we're doing our very best to provide quality services in a very cost-effective way. And what I would just add to that, and the reason that's significant, is that because UNMH is a relatively new provider, they're learning as we are. And so there were some estimations over what the cost would be that in, you know, that, that, for many, many reasons, aren't aligned. Having said that, I do just want to reinforce that we are partnering with UNMH to stabilize that cost and to better understand it and to do our very best to bring it down. And the reason that we need to bring it down is that, that all of the costs that we spend in the jail are, you know, it's a very expensive enterprise. And we're dealing not only with the UNMH contract, but we're also dealing with issues. For example, making sure that we've hired enough staff so we're not spending quite so much on overtime. The other example I would use is that for UNMH, most, I think ninety or ninety-five percent of the folks that they had working at the jails are traveling nurses. Traveling nurses are very expensive. So looking at all the different strategies we can, and as we discussed earlier with the treasurer's presentation, to really focus on HR and making sure we can get people to work with us and for us and creating the conditions that, that is more possible. So there are a lot of moving parts to it. My, as you know, as part of the budget this year, we had an, I don't know, ten million dollars, I think it was, an overage that we, you know, from the previous year, or maybe not at ten, what was it, six or seven? With eight million. So, you know, again, we're, we're working as closely as we can with them to bring that number under control. And then there are other issues and opportunities like Medicaid and other areas that we're going to continue to pursue to do our very best to bring that cost under control. We, you know, just one last thing I'll say is that I, I, this is a very challenging population because their health needs are so severe and significant. So if you're in custody, the chances of your health being good are zero. And so we're dealing with the sickest people in the community. And one of the things that we have to work on is really determining who needs to be in custody or in other placements, as we talked about earlier. So a lot of moving parts to this. And I'll just say that I really appreciate the leadership of the Warden, the leadership of UNMH, Shirley and her team, really just rolling up our sleeves, trying to figure out how we can continue to support, again, a very high-need population, and do it in a way that is cost-effective because there are so many other needs at the jail in addition to, to healthcare.
Thank you, Madam County Manager and Warden. And just one last comment, really compliment from my tour on Friday. And I didn't realize when we planned this that that would be on Memorial Day weekend. And you all were explaining to me, you know, because of the, the court schedule, things like that, the population grows. You know, we also talked about the staffing challenges, which are probably enhanced when you have, you know, a holiday weekend like that where there may be family in town, people, you know. Absences may be more acute. And, and I thought that in general, the facility was, granted, you knew I was coming, but it, it was very clean and in, in good order. And, I mean, to my very untrained eyes, I mean, I'm not a professional jail inspector or, you know, something of that nature. But I, I think it was, it was good to see that the conditions were generally as, as good as you could hope for in, in an environment like that. So I think you and your team are doing an excellent job of, of running a, a good ship out there with, with the resources and the, and the population that you have. So, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll close the floor. Madam Clerk, get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yes.
Commissioner Walt Benson.
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barboa.
Yes.
Chair Olivas.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes five-zero. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Announcement of our next commission meeting on Tuesday, June tenth. We will have a zoning meeting at three PM right here in the Ken Sanchez Chambers. And right after that, at five PM, we will have our regular administrative meeting in the council, in the Ken Sanchez Chambers. With that, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.